Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call the order of the February 7th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Lomis?
Here.
Commissioner Rednick?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. We will now move on to public statements. This time is reserved for anyone who wishes to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on Items 5 and 6, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, we will now move on to the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item, non-public Hearing Items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item for separate consideration? Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items?
I move that we...
Commissioner Rednick, may I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Wade, thank you. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Rednick?
Yes.
We will now move on to Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The planning director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Mr. Coyle, may you please read the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. We have two projects on the Consent Calendar Public Hearings portion of the agenda this evening. Both are extensions of time, one for vesting tentative tract map 6745, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project consisting of 205 lots on 55 acres, zoned R1 located at the southwest corner of Romero Road and the future Mountain Ridge Drive. And an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 7039, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project consisting of 119 lots on 40.05 acres, zoned R1 located at the northwest corner of Renfro and Reyna Roads. This concludes my reading of the Consent Calendar Public Hearings portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item, 5A or 5B? Again, this is not the time to take testimony, just come and request that it be moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Seeing no one in the audience, does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? All right, seeing no commissioners, at this time, the public hearing on all Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items not removed are now closed. May I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on Consent Calendar Items 5A and 5B incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
So moved.
Commissioner Bell, may I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rednick, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Rednick?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. It is now time to hear the public hearing items. We have two on our agenda tonight. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given a five-minute time to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may also be provided to the clerk, who will provide the copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in a hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear Mr. Coyle, would you please provide your staff report on Item 6A?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I would like to give a combined staff report since both projects apply to the same parcel. KSA Group Architects representing ABS Surplus OLLC are the applicants here this evening. This is a project for a new neighborhood shopping center generally located on the southwest corner of Stockdale Highway and Buena Vista Road in southwest Bakersfield. First, we have a request to change the zone district from a planned commercial development zone to a regional commercial slash planned commercial development combining zone, or a more restrictive district on 10.59 acres. Secondly, we have a planned development review for a mixed-use shopping center in a C2 PCD Zone District on 10.59 acres. More specifically, the applicant is requesting phased construction to allow the development of an approximate 74,000 square foot shopping center with eight buildings of single and multi-tenant, consisting of retail, food service, financial institution, and a fuel station with convenience store. This project was considered at the January 3rd, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Following staff's presentation, public comments, and deliberation by your commission, the project was referred back to staff so the onsite sign could be updated with the appropriate zoning information. Based on comments received on the project at that hearing, the applicant revised the site plan by: A) Adding 850 feet of textured colored pedestrian walkways; B) Adding textured paving at the pedestrian plaza and at each store entrance; C) Adding textured paving at the drive approaches on Stockdale Highway and Buena Vista Road, and to a lesser degree, the two main drive approaches on River Parkway; D) Adding covered landscape pedestrian rest stop midway on the main pedestrian walkway from Stockdale Highway; E) Adding a landscape island at the Buena Vista Drive Approach; F) Increasing the landscape setbacks on Stockdale Highway and Buena Vista from 10 feet to 15 feet to conform to the new landscape ordinance. This dimension is a minimum, and in most cases, the setback is greater than the required minimum. G) Increasing the minimum landscape setback from the right-of-way line on River Parkway to 8 feet to conform to the new landscape ordinance. H) Adding 89 new 24-inch box trees and 16 new 36-inch box trees to the previous landscape plan. And I) Adding a 4-foot-high screening wall with landscape hedges at all drive-through lanes. A memorandum has been prepared, excuse me, to further revise the site plan to enhance the overall experience for the shopping center by adding a second water feature and splitting the pedestrian path south of that new feature so that pedestrians can cross the drive at the corners, which is more typical of a pedestrian crossing rather than crossing at the center of the intersection. The project has been designed in compliance with requirements of city standards and policies to include design standards for large retail developments, and no deviations from zoning ordinance standards have been requested. Nonetheless, condition of approval number 11B19 is included stating that the Planning Division shall review and approve all final plans prior to the issuance of building permits to ensure the center meets the requirements of the design standards for large retail developments. Should the applicant decide to deviate from the sign ordinance or expand onsite development in the future, your commission will have the opportunity to review and comment under a separate review. No changes were required related to SEQA. An initial study was prepared for the original project of the subject property, and a mitigated negative declaration was adopted on November 3rd, 1999. Staff finds that the mitigated negative declaration is adequate, and no further environmental review is needed. Mitigation measures from the related project addressing public services, traffic, biological, and cultural resource impacts have been included and attached to the resolution. However, pursuant to the California Fish and Game Code, Section 711.4, re-adoption of the mitigated negative declaration is necessary to effectuate the approval process for this project. Overall, staff finds that the applicable provisions of SEQA have been complied with, that the applicant, in response to previous comments, has designed the project to cite commercial uses in a way that will be compatible with the residential land uses in the immediate surrounding area, and the proposal sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings pursuant to Section 17.54.070 of the PCD Chapter of the Bakersfield Zoning Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends that your commission approve a C2 PCD combining zone on the 10.59 acres and approve the mitigated negative declaration and recommend the same to the City Council. Staff also recommends your commission approve Plan Development Review Number 18-0385 as depicted in the project description and subject to the listed mitigation conditions of approval incorporating the Director's Memorandum dated today, February 7, 2019. I would also like to add that earlier today, staff received a letter in opposition to the project, a copy has been provided to you, and no other comments, written or verbal, have been received by our division since the last public hearing. This concludes the staff report on these two projects.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on Items 6A and 6B is open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jim Halfertie with Halfertie Development Company. Our firm, along with the Louis family of Bakersfield, have filed an application with the city to rezone the site at the southwest corner of Stockdale Highway in Buena Vista in the prestigious area of Seven Oaks to a C2 PCD zoning designation. In March of 2000, the City Council zoned this vacant 10-and-a-half acre parcel to PCD to allow for the development of a neighborhood shopping center to be anchored by an Albertson's Supermarket. The zoning we seek tonight and the plans that we have presented to the commission continue to provide a neighborhood shopping center that will serve the daily needs of the residents in this area. We have designated this center as "The Village at River Oaks," and you will see why when we've given it that name when we describe the project with its walking connectivity and gathering points. We are cognizant of the prestigious shops at Riverwalk diagonally across the intersection. That 40-acre project is what we call in the commercial real estate nomenclature a "destination shopping center." It is well-executed, and our project is designed to complement and enhance the neighborhood. The team that has been assembled to develop this project is made up of veterans of the Bakersfield community. I'd like to introduce the team to you. My firm, Halfertie Development Company, was founded in 1980. We specialize in the development of retail commercial projects as well as mid-size office buildings. To date, we have developed nearly 1 million square feet of office space and approximately 6 million square feet of shopping centers, retail space. Our firm began developing projects in Bakersfield in the mid-1990s with the Vons Shopping Center pads and shops at White Lane and Hughes. As a preferred developer for the Rite Aid Corporation, we have developed five Rite Aid projects in Bakersfield. They are at Brim Hall and Callaway, Mount Vernon and Bernard, Olive and Jueta, Old River and Panama, and currently, we have under construction at 34th Street across from the entrance at Memorial Hospital. My partner in this project is Jason Louis and the Louis family. Tina and Tim Louis were graduates of Bakersfield High School and were instrumental in developing the California Pavilion, a shopping center project at California Avenue and Highway 99. You may be interested to know that the Louis family also owns the office building at the corner of River Run and Buena Vista, right across the street from this project. So no one could have a keener interest in seeing that this project enhances the neighborhood than the Louis family does. The project architect is Derek Holdsworth of KSA Architects. He has practiced architecture in Bakersfield since 1976. In fact, Derek was the architect of the Louis' building across the street from this project. Our project civil engineer is Bob Swanson of Swanson Engineering. Bob has been a civil engineer practicing his craft in Bakersfield since 1984. Our marketing and leasing efforts are being handled by Scott Underhill, one of the founders of ASU and Associates. Everybody here knows Scott. He's the most successful commercial leasing agent in Bakersfield, if not all of Kern County. By the way, he pays me to say stuff like that. Scott has an impressive 38-year career as a retail specialist. His major development clients include Grimway and Bolthouse. He has provided retail brokerage services for over 50 shopping centers in his career, and he represents a number of quality retail shopping center clients in Kern County as their exclusive broker. In summary, the development team is comprised of local Bakersfield professionals that, with our combined experience, can successfully execute a quality real estate project such as this. Now, our architect, Derek Holdsworth, will present the project to you for your consideration, and I'll be available at the end of his remarks to answer any questions that you may have. Again, thank you for your consideration. Kevin, am I going to be using... Sorry, are you... Who's...
I can advance.
Okay, perfect. So, based on the last commission meeting, we... There were several issues and concerns from both the council, I mean, from the commission and the public. And over the last three weeks, we've worked really hard in order to try to address all of those issues. And I apologize in advance if I repeat some of the comments that Kevin has made, but I'll try to go through this very quickly. What I'd like to do is graphically show you how we've responded to those issues. So, I'm not sure what's happening here. Am I...
Technical difficulties, it looks like. Bear with us.
I can sing if... Oh, no, here we go. Okay, so, again, as Jim mentioned, this is "The Village at River Oaks," we're calling it. And I'd just quickly like to go through some of the exhibits and show how we've responded to some of the concerns and how we've approached it. Okay, next slide. So the first issue that came up was the quality and extent of the landscaping, not being consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, not being consistent with the shops at Riverwalk. So we, as Kevin has mentioned, we have agreed and redesigned this to comply with the new landscape ordinance. This little graphic really is intended to show you, just from a contrast standpoint, the wet landscaping area. This is the pervious landscape area, it doesn't include any hardscape or walkways. So you can see the green is the landscape, and it's quite extensive. Right now, we have 10.59 gross acres or net acres on the site, and the total... Whoop, it went... Anyway, go back. We have... Approximately, there we go. 2.73 are almost, in excess of 25% of the entire properties in landscape. So here's our landscape plan, you've seen this on the screen before. The main issues were, as we talked about, the setbacks, the number of trees. Another issue that was addressed was the walkability and pedestrian access to the site. So as Kevin has mentioned, we added almost 900 linear feet for a total of about 1,900 linear feet now of pedestrian walkways. The setbacks at Stockdale and Buena Vista, it's a 40-foot setback from the curb face to the drive-through wall on Buena Vista, and 34-foot setback on Stockdale Highway from the corner. So we've got substantial landscape setbacks. We've also added articulated paving at both entrances, adding a landscape island. And now you can actually physically walk connectivity from almost all the buildings on the site and from the surrounding neighborhood to the site. 89 24-inch box trees, 16 36-inch box trees. We now have 271 trees on this site, including 14 very mature trees that were existing on the site and which we're keeping. We've added... The other issue that was talked about was the screening of the drive-throughs, and so we've added a 48-inch high-screen wall along with hedges and berming landscaping at all the drive-through lanes, and I've got a little graphic that I can show you later on. Again, landscape setbacks were increased on both Buena Vista and Stockdale Highway, and landscape setbacks were increased on River Run and River Parkway. Our building area is 1.64 acres, which is about 15.5%. On a project like this, most developers like to get somewhere between 25 and 30% yield. So as you can see, we're substantially under that, so the impact of the buildings on this site is much less than a typical retail center. Again, 1,900 linear feet of pedestrian walks and plazas, and a total open space of 4.2 acres, which is just under 40% of the entire site, is in open space. As we mentioned, one of the concerns that came up is that the main water feature that we had, which is located, I don't have a mouse here, but which is located at the corner of the main shop building, as being in Phase 2, and there would not be a water feature as part of Phase 1, and was there some consideration to relocating it? And we looked at that, and we felt like that the location of the water feature was exactly where it needed to be for the overall development for Phase 1 and Phase 2. It anchors the pedestrian pathway that runs north and south through the site, and it also anchors the main plaza in front of the shops building. So, as a response to that, we thought we would look at another alternative, and what we've done is we've added a second water feature, and you can see it there at the top, it's midway in the pedestrian plaza. It does three things. One, it provides a visual water feature as you drive and enter into the site, so it becomes kind of a focal point at the entrance to the site. It acts as a gathering place for pedestrians and shoppers, they can sit around that fountain. And then the third thing it does is it puts a water feature in Phase 1, that would be constructed as part of Phase 1. We just introduced this little sketch to kind of show it in the context of the neighborhood. You can see the margins, the landscape margins are consistent with the shops at the Riverwalk and at the office buildings across the street. Again, a blow-up, you can see now where the hedges are and the walls around the drive-through lanes. We also have 28 cars, automobiles, that actually park adjacent to the streets, so 28 out of 383. And in those locations, we provided hedges and berms to screen the headlights from the street, which is required by the new ordinance. Again, at the center of the site, just a blow-up again of the fountain, both water features, and of the driveway as it enters from Buena Vista, pedestrian plaza in front of the shops building that ties directly to the sidewalk on River Parkway. At the south end, this is where the majority of the existing trees are. At the drive, at the gas station canopy, we've, we're showing 16 trees to mitigate the impact of that canopy and screen that from Buena Vista. The canopy's not visible and screened by the buildings from any residential areas. And then, oh, that's okay. Go ahead. So, I got a little faded. So here, I'm just throwing in a couple of sections of showing you how we're screening the drive-through lanes. This happens to be on the second restaurant on Stockdale Highway. And it varies as the sidewalk, this happens to be a condition where the sidewalk is out at the face of the curb, and we have about a 38-foot landscape between the sidewalk and the wall. This is a condition where the, it's a meandering sidewalk, this is at the drive-through in Stockdale Highway Building 3, which is the bank. And again, if you look at the dimensions, it's close to 40 feet, and then you have a landscape parkway between the sidewalk and the face of the curb. And this is a section through the drive-through in Buena Vista. This is a meandering sidewalk that moves much closer to the building, so you have a substantial landscape parkway between the face of the curb and the sidewalk, and then a landscape berm between the sidewalk and the drive-through. And the elevation or the dimension or the distance of these berms that come up the wall will vary depending on the finished floor elevations relative to the flow line of the gutter. So all of those will be elevated. So, all of those will be elevated. And then, just, we had four 3D visualizations prepared to give you an idea of what we're thinking about the architecture. One of the things that we were asked to do from the very beginning was be respectful of the existing architectural vocabulary in the area, both at shops at Riverwalk and at the office buildings, to use the same architectural treatments, which are basically masonry veneer and cement plaster. And so, we've taken that approach, but we've added a couple of features that we think, we don't want it to be identical to those components. So, we're using natural-anodized aluminum sunscreens, a natural-anodized aluminum storefront system, and a natural-anodized standing c metal roof as the three components that are going to be consistent from building to building. Now, each building will be different in terms of their colors and different masonry, perhaps of different features, different architecture, but they'll all be tied together, if I hit that one more time. They'll all be tied together by those three components. This happens to be Building 1, which is the restaurant on the corner. The arrow's kind of showing you where the view is. This is Building Number 4. Again, this building has two food service components to it. It's a multi-tenant building. You're looking at it, and that's the entrance to the little sandwich shop and the patios that we see being developed out there. Similar architecture, different color brick, more contemporary detailing at the roof lines, just to break it apart a little bit from the existing architecture there. This is a view of the water feature at the multi-tenant shop building. Again, it anchors the center, we feel like, and there'd be a lot of activity in front of these stores. This all faces north, by the way, so in terms of a comfort situation, being able to walk along this pedestrian plaza will be very comfortable in the summertime. And then, finally, this is Building 7, yeah, Building 7, which is a retail building. Again, trying to show that we have similar architectural components, but a different colors, different look. So, each building is, has a unique character to it. And that's it. I appreciate you letting me do this, and any more questions, we'll be here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kater, members of the commission, my name is Scott Underhill. Thank you for hearing us this evening. I appear before you not only to say that I support the project, but I'm also kind of the property historian. I represented Tom Coleman and the sale of the property to Albertson's 18 years ago, and I'm the guy that said the sign that says Albertson's coming soon on the property for 18 years. So, as we look at this project tonight, it's been a long haul. I think it's beautiful. If you have any questions of what's happened over the past 18 years, I'm here to help you answer them. Thank you very much.
Before we move to the opposition, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the project in the audience? All right. Seeing no others wishing to speak in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
I'm Andy Kelly. I'm from the River Oaks neighborhood. And this is the Village at River Oaks that we're talking about, said multiple times. It's not in River Oaks. It's at River Oaks, but it's in River Oaks. And that's what the neighborhood is concerned with. Various people, it feels like I have a part-time job on this, direct messaging me, emailing me, text messaging me, catching me as I ride down the street about this project. I don't know how many, maybe 50, 60. Not as many can come here, so I'm kind of here as something of an ombudsman. The concerns, traffic is huge, noise, traffic, litter, and they're all kind of intertwined. We have an existing neighborhood, residential neighborhood on the south and the west that is a nice neighborhood. It's a very nice neighborhood, very good schools, very good people. I'm sure it will help to lease this project because the average me, or the median income nearby will support a good project, and I'm sure that that will be part of the advertising to attract people to invest their money in the project. We're also concerned with the business types. So, we've got a Samco gas station, of which there are six currently in Bakersfield. Four are open until 11:00 at night. Two are open 24 hours a day. The two that are open 24 hours a day are on similar volume streets or highways like Stockdale Highway. So, we could be potentially looking at a 24-hour facility in our midst with all the noise. Additionally, while we know we have four drive-throughs and we think we have three fast foods and there's no committal, I have learned that there's a Del Taco coming in. Nobody wants a Del Taco. It's the Del Taco of fast food. Many of their locations are 24 hours a day. That location in and of itself, they say on their franchising information, they average after one year 450 trips a day. So, that's one location, 450 trips a day. Three other locations that have drive-throughs, one is proposed to be a bank, but could be fast food. The three ingresses and ingress egresses on River Parkway, it's not River Parkway, it's River Park Way. It's a small street. It's a one-block street that kind of buffers the neighborhood to this project. Currently, people walk their dogs, they leave to go to Stockdale, or they leave to go to River Run Boulevard, and unfortunately, some people park there at night. But it is a small street, and we have three of these. So, people are going to fly off of Stockdale, which Vice Chair Coman, you asked the engineer last month whether a traffic study had been done. Well, I was able to meet with Greg Peters from Halfertie here in town nearby the project, and he told me yes in 1999. In 1999, in 1999, our ZIP code 93311 was half its size. It was 20,000 people. It's now 46,000 people. Bakersfield was 247,000. In 2016, it was 377,000. So, how could a traffic study and a sequoia study that that was combined into be relevant today? A lot of the people that bought homes there probably had kids that were toddlers. It's a long time. Anthony Meeks, who, Planning Director Coyle, mentioned, his letter was delivered today, he lives 65 feet from Building 1. Building 1 is on the corner of River Parkway and Stockdale Highway and is supposed to be a fast food place. It's Building 1, and since Del Taco has already attempted to pull permits, I'm assuming it's going to be a Del Taco. In that original ordinance that City Council passed for this project in March 29th of 2000, there was a restriction on amplified drive-throughs, the voice boxes, which were much different than they are today, but still they're similar. It was 135-foot minimum from a residential structure on the south side of the project, which is strange because that's all the way across River Run Boulevard, which is a four-lane with a median and pine trees in the middle and sycamore trees on either side. So, his question is, why does he have to order a Diet Coke at 10:00 in the morning while he's laying in bed on a Saturday? He's thinking that 135 feet minimum should be the setback. In fact, of course, he'd like more. That 2,000 approval with that traffic study, we believe we need a new traffic study, just based on the numbers of people that live in the ZIP code, that live in town. When I first came to Bakersfield, people drove a little slower. People drive faster now. They do, on side streets and on places like Buena Vista and Stockdale Highway. I think you probably all experienced that as well. So, River Oaks is on the two sides, and the architect went through these visualizations, and he showed considerable changes on Buena Vista, setbacks, walls, sound walls, berming, and those things. On River Parkway, we went from eight to 10 feet because of the, or to eight feet, I'm sorry, I don't know what it was before because we didn't have a scale drawing, we went to eight feet because of the new ordinance, the new landscape ordinance. So, we weren't heard on that backside of the project, on the River Parkway. We weren't heard at all. Also, on his site map showing landscape, it shows the south side, including the city's landscape, which has existing sycamore trees and some existing sidewalk and some existing common Bermuda. That side has a little more protection, but again, those people are all the way across the road. The people on River Parkway or abut River Parkway, they're getting eight feet for their money. That's what they're getting. They didn't get anything. Additionally, when we look at this project, we're concerned again about the basin that is an existing basin that I checked with the water department and the, I guess it's General Services, and it was designed for this project in mind back in the 90s. However, a lot of laws have changed in regard to stormwater and sweeps and things of that nature, and water cannot be delivered to that basin from another parcel dirty. And dirty in California means it has sand in it. I mean, that's the law. So, there's no basin, there's no desilting basin that is proposed on this, and we are wondering, what's that going to do to our basin? What's that going to do to the infiltration rate of our basin? Are we going to have nuisance water in the summertime causing mosquitoes? This seems like a board of health issue, and I guess that could be taken up that way. But it seems like in planning, we could plan around it or plan for it so that the neighborhood, on River Parkway especially, can get a quality of life. I wrote down, when Commissioner Kater was speaking, that you're here for the general well-being of the community. That's part of your mandate. We're the community. We're the community that is on two sides of this, and we're there all the time, unfortunately or fortunately for us. What we've noticed is the items that were very focused on by Castle &amp; Cook, which were the things that were improved by and large, Larry Coman, Commissioner Coman, you wanted a pedestrian pathway, a better pathway. They did that, and he even noted, except for one building, and that's the one with the arrow on it right there, that's Building 7. That one is orphaned. For whatever reason, that building is orphaned. If you look at the plan, there's no pedestrian access to that. You're going to jump out of your car and you're going to run to it with your nine-year-old or your six-year-old or your five-year-old. Again, I think that we're back at where we were last month, which is, more thought has gone in as the presentations have gotten better and more changes have gone in, but River Parkway is still going to have the noise and the traffic. We need the study, and we need better mitigation on the noise on that side. We're also going to have the water and the mosquitoes potentially. That basin is, when we had the rain last week, it didn't infiltrate in 48 hours, which is the law. It didn't. Maybe none of them do in Bakersfield, I don't know, but I'm looking at that one, and so is the neighborhood. Again, I guess in summary, we're hoping that you will make this into a destination center. A Del Taco is a five-minute get-your-munch-on. A gas station is get-your 324 ounces and $10 worth of gas. And what else do we have there? Possibly a bank, and some commercial, and some parking lot. We're very concerned with traffic, noise, litter, and the effect that this is going to have on our neighborhood, and we'd really like for you to take the general well-being of the community in and send them back to the drawing board. They improved it. I'm not going to say they didn't improve it, but they didn't improve it enough. They kind of did some percentage in between. They didn't put it across the goal line. So, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Ray Shabnerian, I live in the immediate area there, lived there since, basically, the neighborhood was born, a block away from this project. One thing I do want to emphasize is with, since the last meeting we had, the developer did contact me directly to have a discussion about the project, which I appreciated. I wanted to mention that. Unfortunately, the day they were in town, I was out of town for work, so we were unable to meet, but I did forward the information onto the previous speaker so they could connect. In regards to respecting your time, I don't want to mention the things that were just mentioned by the previous speaker. One thing I do want to emphasize is the traffic. I've learned that through the presentation that the traffic study was from years before. Not sure exactly how the law works in regards to the exact terminology and so forth, but it just seems like anybody that's been in that immediate area, there's been quite a bit of development in the past 17 years or so. So, I'm not sure if, one, it would be appropriate. I'm just raising the question. That is a key concern that I wanted to emphasize because of safety, if that's taken into consideration. And the River Parkway is a really small street, so I'm not sure as to the amount of traffic that's being directed there would be in line with the traffic study that would be conducted. And with that said, I'll wrap up once again in respect to your time. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Thank you. Please come forward, state your name, and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Maria C. Enriquez. I just wanted to, directly to talk to all of you. Thank you so much for taking in consideration about this project. I think everybody in the neighborhood, if we'd like to have any project, they can enhance what the community would like. But one thing I wanted just to let the construction company to know, in the corner, in the corner is all our kids, they're coming up to pick up the bus to go to school, and it's very important for all our community, their kids, they can be safe. And then, I please respectfully, I asking you to take in consideration that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will try to articulate the best way possible. We moved to Bakersfield around 1996, moved from Schafter with a dream, build a house for our kids. They grew up, go to the best schools in town, and we did. It was only five family lives in that location. It was very quiet. It was wonderful to see our kids go to the street, ride bicycles, play ball all the time. Since we started to get to see all these new developments, we love it because we know there was progress, more jobs, more opportunity for all. Unfortunately, with all, the crime started rising in our community. Many of our neighbors, they've been parking in their vehicles and their houses. We've been forced to buy new security systems in that area with all these new drive-through restaurants. The only thing is going to be bring some more problems, and I don't like to singleize to anybody or to any groups in a specific, but it's crazy to live there. Several years ago, I started kind of patrol my neighborhood, see the vehicles coming and bikes and... and buying alcohol for other places, and looking for the best for my family, call cops, take it 30 minutes, 40 minutes. Sometimes the police arrive when we have a police station two blocks. Our night, our house, there was a dream, this can be coming be a nightmare with all these new developments. I started to get old, my wife get old, my kids move out, they're living in other places. It's hard for me to start over again. We have several neighbors on the same conditions. They just wait and spec, they live the last days in that area. The only thing I ask you guys, please take in consideration to their best interest. And I know you guys looking for best interest for the community too, appreciate that. But we are starting to get old, and sometimes it get hard to start over again in a new place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the project? And to be respectful of time, if anyone else would like to speak in opposition, feel free to come to the front and sit, just to expedite the transition time. Thank you.
I didn't listen, I didn't attend the last planning commission meeting, so this is all new to me.
Yes.
But I was appalled by what I heard Andy Brown say.
I'm sorry, could you state your name first?
Kathleen Collins.
Thank you so much.
And I, I hope that you will pay attention to what he's saying. I go by Tildaco on Main regularly, and it's a sad situation in that area. You have a lot of people that are homeless that are living there. And that's an area, and I, I don't want to see that happen here. It would be nice if Bakersfield addressed the problem, but I don't see them addressing the problem. And I don't want to see a sad situation in that area where we're living. You had mentioned the general welfare, and I hope that you put the general welfare first. It sounds like the other organization that had the 40 acres did their best and went above and above, beyond what you required. I would hope that that's something that you want to encourage and you want to positively reinforce. And so I know that the, it sounds like they've made a real effort, the people that are building this here. It sounds like they went to a lot of extra work, but this is something additional from what was pointed out that they can look at, and I'm sure, I'm sure in good faith that you will address it. Thank you.
Thank you. One more time, anyone else in opposition wishing to speak in opposition to item 6A or 6B? Seeing no one else, before we move to rebuttals, does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item or staff? Remember, this is not a time to express any opinions on the matter, only a time to ask questions. Staff and public, but not comments. Yes. You could ask non-specific questions, but it's already 6:25. Commissioner Rudnick? You're up.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say that I greatly appreciate the developer's effort in making these changes and working with the commission and the public in what the previous issues are.
Commissioner Rudnick, I would remind you, it's not a time to state opinions, just...
I appreciate that. Let me just continue with the questions now. For, this is for staff. The, I think the gentleman's name was Andy, he brought up the traffic study validity. Since it's almost 20 years old, is there any issues with that procedurally or it, can you enlighten us on that?
I'm not sure about the procedural question, but I think what staff took into consideration was the fact that the proposal is going to be less intense than what was originally entitled. So the thinking was that there would be fewer impacts because the project had been scaled down.
Okay. And then the 135-foot amplified restriction, I, not aware of that being involved? Is it involved or not involved? Can you kind of elaborate on that?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. Is that something the gentleman brought up, and I wasn't quite sure how that fit in? So there is no restriction active on that site?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but I will look into that.
And then he also talked about basin issue and drainage. And so obviously, the project had a drainage plan proposed, approved. It drains on-site, is my understanding, through storm sewer. Is that correct or?
I guess I can, I can try to answer that question for you, Commissioner. The site has actually a stubbed-out storm drain from a previous tract construction near the southwest side of the site, which we have seen that, from what we can say, seeing what our preliminary investigation indicates, that that stubout was used and was intended for drainage of this site when it got constructed.
So obviously, there's adequate capacity, et cetera, et cetera, that there should be any...
We feel that there is, going to the sump, the existing sump, preliminarily, just, we have looked at that. We have not been able to find the approved study. It's not in our files anymore. However, we do have approval letters for the basin and for the two tracks that drain into it.
Okay, I'm a little confused, so let me clarify my thoughts for a second. The sump that you're speaking about, is that the sump at the west, would it be the southwest corner of the project across the street?
Yes.
Okay, so that is used by this project?
Well, it will be if it's connected to the 36-inch drain that's, that's stubbed out to it, yes.
Okay, so that, that sump was sized for this project in mind when it was...
It appears that it has been, yes.
Okay, so it will use that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's, that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rudnick. Next, Commissioner Coman.
Thank you. Christopher Rudnick asked, actually hit on a couple of the questions that I had. One of the, one of the public speakers talked about a bus stop, and I wasn't aware there was a bus stop. Where is the bus stop that we're talking about? I'm not sure where that is. Does anybody know?
Well, it used to be River Run Boulevard and River Parkway Boulevard. So it used to be on the corner.
It's just down about 150 feet now, 150 feet west of there.
Okay.
It's just, it's adjacent to the basin that we were just talking about.
Okay.
And it gets three pickups and three drop-offs every Monday through Friday at different times.
And that's school bus or is that public bus?
Panama Buena Vista Union.
Yeah, it's at the corner of River Run and River Parkway.
About 150 feet west, yes.
I see, okay. Now, this question is for the, it's for the developer. And in fear of offering an opinion, I do want to thank you for the efforts that you've made since the last meeting to address some of our concerns. I'm wondering if, if you've given any thought or have any proposals on what can be done on that River Parkway side, the west side of the parcel. I know you made, you changed that to eight-foot setbacks now, which is larger than it was before. Having heard the neighbors talk about their issues on River Parkway, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about anything else that can be done?
Commissioner Coman, I'll let Derek Holdsworth maybe comment more specificity. I would like to point out that there is a six-foot-high wall that runs all the way around the neighborhood at that corner. So that helps to deflect traffic and trash and things that Mr. Kelly was concerned about. As far as Mrs. Collins' remarks, I'd like to say that we have spent quite a bit of time, both before the January 3 hearing and then also within the last, last month, in making sure that this project is, as I said in my remarks, commensurate with, or in my opinion, I think I'm going to make it better than of the River Walk, a project across the street. Because this is a neighborhood shopping center, it's a different center than, than the destination shopping across the street, but we can still have the quality. I want to clear up one other thing while I'm up here on rebuttal, hopefully, is that I don't know where this rumor comes about Del Taco. I mean, it's flattering in a way that people, the tenants may want to come to this project, but just because a tenant inquires at the city about this project or this site, there is no agreement with, with Del Taco at this point. So I, I just need to make sure that everybody in the audience is aware of that. And finally, with regard to the school buses, I was not cognizant of that because I don't believe that this, this stops in front of our property. But we can certainly take that in consideration and work with staff on that as well. I would like our civil engineer to respond to the comments about the traffic study and the drainage at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman.
I would remind, this is not the rebuttal period, just a time to ask questions. Rebuttal will follow after questions.
He's just addressing my question about what could be done on that.
And maybe I expanded it a little bit too much. I'm sorry. Thank you.
There will be a time to, we're about five minutes, thank you.
Fortunately, you won't have to hear from me again, I hope.
Okay. Commissioner Coman, any other questions?
I don't think my question been fully answered, so.
Okay.
Kevin, if you could put up one of this, one of the enlarged slides. Again, maybe there's some misinformation. When we said that the landscape setbacks were increased from five feet to eight feet, that was in the standard, not on this site. If you, previous one, or the next one. Right now, we don't have any landscape buffers on River Parkway that are less than 15 feet. And in some cases, they're 20 feet. The landscape area between building one on the corner, again, that landscape requirement is a setback from the right-of-way line. And typically, the right-of-way line is, depending on where it is and what kind of sidewalk we're dealing with, is in, is at least seven feet from the face of the curb. So it's, it would be 15 feet from the face of the curb for the minimum landscape, and in most cases, we have more than that. If you go to the next slide, no, the other way, sorry. Keep going. Okay, that, that distance in front of building six to River Parkway is 26 feet. It's not eight feet. So, and as you move along, as you get, move along to the sidewalk, to the parking lot, those are at least 12 feet or more between the face of the curb and the, and the parking lot. So I just want to clear that up. Nowhere is it eight feet. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, it does, thank you. I have another question while you're here, before you go.
Okay.
We had had some discussion previously about the gas island and some of the reservations about, about the island itself. And I, I see that you've done some screening with some landscape to try to screen it from the road. But there was also some talk about architecturally what you might do with that island. And have you had an opportunity to prepare any architectural renderings of that particular structure?
Not, not in the detail that I think you would be looking for. What, we've had some discussions with the, with the tenant. And one of the things that we want to do is tie the material and the color of that canopy in with the balance of the canopies and the awnings on the site, which is typically not what they want to do. But we've insisted to him that that's what's going to happen. So, but they, the fuel provider has some minimum standards for clearances and the depth and so forth. So once we get our arms around that, it's our intention to, it will not look like a standard gas canopy in terms of the way it looks. And we'll, we'll probably, no, I need to get rid of that thing. We, we'll, we'll add some details to it, and it'll be the same color as the balance of the canopies, and the same with the columns that support it. So it won't stand out, it won't be a porcelain-white canopy like, you know, you've seen in other service stations.
Yeah, so this question, thank you. I'm sorry, this question is for staff and possibly the city attorney's office on our, what our ability is to, in terms of restrictions, to ensure that building number three, it's listed as a bank or something like that on the, on this plan, to ensure that that doesn't change to some other fast food kind of thing in the future.
We can't really restrict that level of detail on the businesses because it's, they'll lease it out in the future, we can't put unlawful restriction on their property rates.
Okay. Restrictions on the types of fast food restaurants, is that possible?
Same type of thing. We can't put, we can't burden the developer with, with undue restrictions.
Okay. And, okay, that's enough for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Next, we have Commissioner Lomas.
One question for staff. I had asked at the last hearing that you look into the sign ordinance, and is it more restrictive on Stockdale?
I do not believe that there are more restrictions on Stockdale, but I have, I have the sign ordinance with me if we need to dive into that.
I believe it ended, it was Truxton that had the more restrictive signs when Ms. Kitchen and I discussed it after the last meeting.
That Stockdale was also included because I remember in other projects. Here, specifically, and I would like to know this, are lighted or LED signs allowed? And I can wait till somebody researches it until we finish the public hearing. That's, those are my only questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. So our staff is looking into that. Should we move on to rebuttal period? Mr. Iger, the, we hear from those in approve, or those in support of the project first, right?
Once again, it's at the chair's pleasure. If you would like to have the applicants go first, the ones in favor, it seems to make sense since we just heard the ones in opposition.
As we just heard the opposition, I think it makes sense to have those in favor. This is now a period of five-minute rebuttal. It's a five-minute total time, so please be concise. If you would like to speak in the rebuttal period, I recommend moving to the front as it is a five-minute total time that begins with the first speaker. Please be succinct without repeating remarks to ensure that everyone wishing to speak can do so. Madam Clerk, would you please start the time for those in favor of the project?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Bob Swanson, the civil engineer for this project. Want to address two issues. Traffic, real briefly, the amount of traffic the center will generate is less than the traffic study predicted 20 years ago, based on the decrease in the amount of building area. Second item, the sump, sumps are not required to drain in 48 hours, they're required to drain in seven days. So the sump that was... So the sump that was dug was made for this project based on my calculations, which the drainage study could not be found. So I took the drainage area and I calculated how big it needed to be. So the sump is sized correctly. And I can't guarantee it will drain in seven days, but that's the requirement. Thank you.
Commissioner Gator, members of the commission, Scott Underhill. I represented Bolthouse Properties in the development and leasing of Grandale Village, which is at the corner of Ming Avenue and Buena Vista, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of the site. In leasing that particular project, I also leased the building to Sullivan's Petroleum Company. They're a 24-hour operation. I have never heard one complaint from neighbors. And I'd like to point out that the canopy for Sullivan's is approximately 82 feet from the closest home. The canopy for the proposed gas station is over 300 feet. I do not anticipate any problems with the canopy, with the lighting and light of the distance, which is significant. And again, in my representation of Bolthouse, I've never heard one complaint from the neighbors. I think it's very important that you understand that. Secondly, I don't know that it's been mentioned quantitatively. The original PCD was for 103,000 square feet. The application before you is for 74,000 square feet. It's unheard of in my industry that a developer will diminish the size of an approved project by 25 percent. Very significant. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about two and a half minutes remaining. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the rebuttal period in favor of the project?
Derek Holdsworth, again, just briefly. The concern about the building three on the corner being converted to, or being changed or modified to a fast-food. There might be a possibility it could be a sit-down restaurant, a smaller sit-down restaurant than the bank is. But right now, the park, the site won't support the parking for an additional fast-food restaurant. So very unlikely that that would ever happen. Also, on the drainage, Bob didn't mention, but when drainage studies are done, the commercial sites are figured as 90 percent impervious. So, and this site, as we've already determined, is about 74 percent impervious. So not only does it have less impact in terms of the roof, but we have much less impervious area in this site than it, than it would be figured in the study.
Thank you. Seeing, is there anyone else before I close the rebuttal period for those in favor of the project? Okay, seeing no one else wishing to speak rebuttal in favor of the project, I will now ask Madam Clerk to set the time for five minutes for those wishing to provide rebuttal comments in opposition to the project. Again, five minutes is a total time for all rebuttal comments. So if you wish to make a comment, please come to the front to maximize your time. Please be succinct. Try not to repeat the remarks of previous speakers and so that we can ensure everyone who wishes to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. Thank you.
Sure. Should I start?
Madam Clerk, please start the time.
Thank you. Ray Shabindarian, my question is, the size from Albertson's to this project has mentioned that it's been reduced by 25 percent. My only question or concern would be the number of drive-throughs, which seems like there'll be more quicker trips that'll, that'll be made so there's more people coming and going. I could be wrong, but that's just something that's stuck to my mind. And in reference to the Bolthouse, which I frequent, I believe that property only has one drive-through and it's the Doors Ice Cream. I'm not sure, but I think that's the only one compared to this project, which has multiple drive-throughs. That's it.
Andy Kelly again. So when I was talking about the basin or the sump across the street, I was aware that there was a 36-inch line stubbed up on the parcel. I was aware that it was designed to handle part of the Phase One and Phase Two of the residential tract and this particular parcel. My question is, oh, the other thing. We haven't had seven days since the rain began for me to look and see if it's fully infiltrated because we keep getting bits and pieces of rain. Saturday, it rained cats and dogs. A couple other times it rained cats and dogs. So it's still got a foot of rain or 15 inches of rain depending. It's not perfectly level on the floor. So that 36-inch line that comes across the street, I was aware of it. And back then, I don't know, I've consulted a few people, maybe I'm getting the wrong information. It was possible to simply offload that water. Now the water infiltrates onto that lot, the parcel that we're talking about. So that water essentially filters through that soil and then hopefully gets banked for Kern County to use. That water, if it's going to go to the basin, to my understanding, it needs to be clean, which means that it needs to have a desilting basin on the property or its own basin on the property, which of course would take up real estate on the property. So that really wouldn't be optimal for development. You know, this, this 103,000 versus 74,000 square feet of retail, I couldn't figure out why that was. I kept looking at it and I'm a neophyte. I've got a day job. I'm a neophyte to this. But the architect's comment nailed it. It's because there's so much fast food. It's because they are going to get hit at the different rushes that all fast food get, where they're going to have 70 people driving in and parking and 20 minutes later, they're going to drive out. And then it's going to be slow and then they're going to have rushes. So that's why they needed more, I assume, they needed more parking space. And to say that a traffic study based on lower square footage of desired place to visit or do business is going to reduce trips, we've got twice as many people who live in that zip code. And if you go west, there isn't anything like this. So they're going to come in that way. It's going to come. But they're going to come in that way for the next X amount of years until their projects pencil out like this one evidently does. So there, here we are. We're kind of dueling factoids. And I think, again, maybe we have, I think we have more information from the developer this time. They certainly got their presentations in a row. But again, I think that we're getting a project that is four drive-throughs for people to blaze in and blaze out and blaze down our streets. If you look around our neighborhood, we have a lot more traffic lights than we used to have. That's a function of a lot more traffic, which is a function of a lot more people. This is only going to add to that. And we are very concerned and we're very concerned. River Run Boulevard, stand there at 3 o'clock in the afternoon and watch. It is a zoo and this is only going to make it worse. I guess you can't dictate because it would be getting into the builder's purview. But where's the residential people that live there's purview? Where, where's our say? I don't want to make some guy put up an office building where he wants to put up a car wash, but I do want him to put up something that makes sense for the community. And the majority of our residents don't feel like it makes sense. So thank you again.
I just connect with all of you. Please, we welcome you as a developer, but we want our kids to grow in the community where we can enjoy all that surrounded. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That complete?
I think before you close the public hearing, Commissioner Lomas had a question that I think the planning director may have an answer to.
Yes.
Well, we're not finding anything about restrictions regarding signs on Stockdale Highway other than there's a reference to Stockdale Highway west of the Arvin-Eddison Canal. But those are freestanding pylon signs. LED signs are permitted.
Are we able to alter that? With further restrictions?
I would say not tonight. The ordinance was adopted by city council. I don't know that I would be comfortable going above and beyond. I think what we talked about before was if they brought in something different as a comprehensive sign plan, you would get to review it. I'd have to, but I don't, I would not be comfortable requiring something that's not already required in the municipal code.
Well, we can have.
But down the road, we get, we get a say. No.
If it comes in with a comprehensive sign plan, yes. If they, if they deviate from the standards.
I have a longer, much longer conversation to have. Is it possible to take a break?
Yes, we can take a break.
Before or after the public hearing is closed? I'm fine.
You can take a break before. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, five-minute. All right, Madam Clerk? Do I call the meeting back to order? All right, I call the meeting back to order. I believe before we close the public hearing there, Commissioner Lomas, do you have follow-up questions for staff or have your staff?
Staff has answered my questions and will address my concerns once the public hearing is closed. Thank you for asking.
Thank you so much. I have one more question for staff before we close the public hearing, which some of the neighbors came out and asked not just about water, water exiting the site, but also water quality. Can, can you explain a little bit about wastewater and, well, not wastewater, but stormwater and how it's treated before it goes into the ground?
Hi. Well, in this case, in this particular case, that sump is a city-maintained sump. And it is a terminal sump. And because it's terminal, that is the treatment. So when it is sized for the area that is draining into it, then water is allowed to go into it from an area that is being drained. And that becomes the treatment right, right there. Does that answer your question?
And are there any, of the sump itself, is there any maintenance that determines?
It's city-maintained sump and Water Resources Department maintains that on a periodical basis. I understand, in fact, we spoke to him, or Water Resources guy who maintains those. He has indicated that it has percolated quite well up to now. So of course, this hasn't developed yet, so.
Okay.
We'll see.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we, I close the public hearing and we move to Commissioner comment and action? Seeing other questions, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to commission for comment and action. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Coleman?
All right. Thank you. I want to first say that I, I did have a lot of concerns about this project when it was first submitted. And I, I don't think my, my concerns were gone away, but I think that they've been mitigated somewhat by the efforts that the developer has taken over the last month or so since our last meeting. I am still looking for some language to, to ensure that some of these things that we've talked about have been, have been met. Specifically, the, the phasing project, where we're having a Phase One and Phase Two. I'm, I'd really like us to see that the landscape portion is complete so that we don't have one-third or two-thirds of the lot, I think it's about one-third of the lot, as nothing is done, so that the landscape is done for the whole site and that those areas that are designated to be Phase Two have some kind of fencing. I think we have some precedence for that in some other development projects. And I don't know what the language should be to achieve that, but basically, I just wanted to see that the landscape parks are done and that those two areas that are going to be Phase Two are somehow fenced off or something like that. And I don't know how we achieve that, so I'll ask for staff's assistance on that. And the other item is the, and if I just kind of, I made scribble notes, so I have to try to interpret what I wrote on here, so. I'm still a little bit concerned about the landscape, the landscape shield at that, at the Gas Island. I know we're talking about putting larger trees. I just wanted somehow notate if we do this that those have, somehow have to be maintained so they don't get to be cut down by the, by the first tenant that comes in there. So I don't know what we can do about that. We talked about an architectural feature at the corner of Buena Vista and Stockdale. And I was kind of hoping that we would see something from the architect on, on that. Has any more thought, is, can I ask a question? Has any more thought been given to that, that item?
I would also note the public hearing has been closed, so please limit your response to answering the question. Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman, we did talk about that. And yes, it would be our intent to design some kind of a, a sign that, or an architectural feature that describes the name of the center. If that's what you had in mind, I think that's what we have in mind. So are we on the same page?
Yeah, I don't know if I was talking about a sign, but I was talking about certainly something to, you know, to identify that corner because whatever happens on your corner is going to eventually happen on the corner across the street from you. And so we want to make sure that we control that whole four, four-corner thing.
I'm sorry, we didn't get that into our plan, but that's our intent, yes.
Otherwise, I, I'm thinking that I'm, I'm liking the changes that were done to the plan. And I can be, I can be much more supportive of this plan this time. I'm sorry?
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Rudnick?
Thank you. I wanted to speak to the folks that had come here to give their concerns. It's very frustrating. I understand I've been on the, on your side of the issue before with other properties. And it's, it's frustrating that you don't have a lot of power, I guess is a good word, in this situation. I think what you're mostly frustrated with is the zoning on the property, which has been existing for 20-plus years. And we are bound by that zoning. I hope you understand that. So this usage is more than adequate for that zoning and there's not anything we can do in regards to changing that. So bearing that in mind, I wanted to talk about the, the speaker noise issue on, I think it's building one. And it looks to me, and this is maybe the developer can help clarify this. The speaker is probably going to face the direction of Stockdale Highway. Is that correct? Okay. I've just been shown that it is facing the direction of Stockdale Highway. I've just been shown that it is facing the direction of Stockdale Highway. So if that logic applies, I'm not a sound engineer, but usually sound's going to travel the direction it's pushed. And if it's pushed towards Stockdale Highway, I don't think there's going to be as much impact on the residential, which according to my calculations, looking at one of the earlier charts, is probably 80 feet away from the... the way I look at it, there's maybe two houses that could be possibly affected by that noise. And one of them sits right on Stockdale Highway, and I could guarantee you the noise from traffic would bury anything that would come from a speaker. So maybe you have one person that's affected in that whole subdivision if the sound would travel a different direction than what it normally would do. So, you know, I think the developer has covered his base in that regard. Another concern you folks had was drainage and flooding the sump and that type of thing. With the landscaping that the developer has done, he's got 25% of the 10 acres landscape, you've got natural drainage as you have currently. And that should take some burden off of that sump as well. So I think that, again, there's been some mitigation to your concern. The traffic study, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer. I see the logic of the folks in the neighborhood that there's going to be more trips because of the... it looks like there's two fast food pads to me if the third one's going to be a restaurant or a bank. And I'm sure it's been calculated in, but compared to an extra 30,000 square feet of commercial, there's got to be a balance of equality, if not less trips. So I think, again, you've kind of been mitigated there as well. I really don't see a lot of issues that can be changed or need to be changed with your concerns. And again, I feel for your frustration, and nobody wants to have things happen without their input. But I do think that things have been mitigated... excuse me, mitigated. And I do think that, again, I think most of your concerns are with existing zoning that was there probably when you bought your home, if not before. So I, again, I think the developer has tried very hard. I appreciate his efforts. It costs money to do these changes, but it does affect the quality of our neighborhood and our city. And I think that's what the commission is here for, to help look at everybody's needs. The neighboring needs are important, but the neighboring needs of the city in general are also important. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bell.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, all of you. It is an honor to sit and listen to a neighborhood who is interested, who cares about their children, who cares about the future of their community. I can assure you, so do we. I do agree, however, with Commissioner Rudnick in that the zoning, moreover, is what your issue is with. I don't think it's so much with the developer. To the things that I had concern of before, which were, I'll give you my little list, sound, lighting, traffic, I would celebrate that developers done a very good job, architects done a very good job in mitigating most of that. It is not easy to reduce a project down 25%. I do understand why they're doing it. They're not doing it because they want to have less building. They're doing it because everybody wants a quick, easier way to get in and out of a center. So it's not the developer who's driving the pattern of development or the buildings that will be built there. It's the demand. It's the community. It's millennials. Yeah, it's all your fault. Commissioner Kater, it's all your fault. So I like Barbara's comment that... never mind, about being an adult, never mind, we'll leave that alone. So, community, you did a good thing by... your interest has encouraged this developer to, and the owners and all of them, to take a real hard look at things, getting more landscaping. I think the one thing I would be a little bit concerned about on that traffic fuel canopy, I don't know if we can legislate this, but I'd like to see Building 6 be taller than the fuel canopy. It most likely will because it'll have to cover, you know, a larger building. Those are larger tenancies. So the canopy will be shielded by that eventually. And that was about it. Beyond that, I think you've done an outstanding job in mitigating it. And I celebrate both the community and their efforts to make sure that was done, have your voices heard. And just understand that the commission is limited by code and by our... by the zoning. But we're going to listen and we're going to try our best at every turn to make sure that we do what's right by the community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lomis. Really? Are you... All right. Commissioner Wade.
This will take 30 seconds. We're also bound by private property rights. And in terms of what could be going here to the neighborhood, this is as good as it's going to get. I think the developer has met you halfway on a lot of things. You should be happy with what's going in here. And like I said, because of how, oh, actually, how Commissioner Bell framed it about the constraints upon us as a commission, but also because of private property rights, we're not going to tell them they cannot put a Del Taco there because homeless people live at Del Taco. That's not within our purview. The things that are within our purview, though, I think have been mitigated pretty well here.
Thank you. Did you... you can go next. Commissioner Lomis.
I won't belabor this. I echo the sentiments that have already been said. It's been improved greatly. And the mere fact of the walkability makes it a much nicer neighborhood center used by the neighborhood. And so I won't belabor that, but I do... one of my pet peeves is those LED lights. And so that was the conversation that I had with staff. Stockdale Highway is a busy road. It also has a curve in it. The LED flashing, pixelating lights drive me crazy. And so I wanted to put that restriction. And staff will... has put together an amendment for a motion this evening that they'll read that I think covers my concerns. Other than that, it's going to be, I think, really a nice addition to our community. So thank you for the extra effort that you went through.
So Planning Director Kevin Coyle actually has a list of conditions based on comments that all of you have been making. If he wants to take a stab at reading all of them before you guys go too much further so you can give us direction if something needs to change?
Should we have all Commissioner comments before we read the final? I'm just... I'm going to say a few things, but I don't think I'm going to have anything to add.
Go ahead.
I'm going to go against what I said about not repeating other people's comments? No, just kidding. No, I just want to say that I think this process is... this project is a great example of what can come from dialogue and community input. I think the project that we saw on January 3rd and the project that we see tonight looks very different. And I think echoing Commissioner Wade, I think that we as a commission are limited in what our purview is. And I think things like drive-throughs, things like types of tenants, those are community-wide conversations. Those are not things that we as a commission can weigh in on. But I do think as far as creating a center that is broken down so it relates more in scale to the River Oak neighborhood, the willingness to not just say that we have a lot of trees, but to actually agree to comply with our revised standards, the addition of the walkability, I think... and also I would say, thank you to the applicant for the enhanced storytelling. I think that the package tonight really displayed the project in a way that I think told the story that I didn't see at the first hearing, and I appreciate that extra effort. I also thank the neighbors. I think this board really exists for public dialogue and community dialogue, and so I appreciate... and I just am glad whenever I can see that. So with that, I will let Mr. Coyle read the amended motion, and I would be happy to make it. Except that I can't. Thank you, Commissioner Lomis. Then I will look to somebody to make the motion. Thank you.
Well, the two conditions that we have tried to create on the fly, one that speaks to Commissioner Lomis's concern about LED signs, we have some suggested language for a condition. Signs that contain changeable copy produced by light emitting diodes or LEDs, incandescent or low voltage lamps or bulbs, cathode ray tubes, plasma, or other such pixelated lighting devices shall be prohibited on Stockdale Highway. And then there is a condition for Commissioner Coman's concern about landscaping. That condition would read, "The entire parcel shall be landscaped during Phase 1. The large pad site identified as being a part of Phase 2 shall be grassed and/or fenced off." Those were the two... Oh, the fuel canopy and Building 6. It is within the planning commission's purview. If you wanted to require that that be a multi-story building to help provide a buffer for... excuse me, provide a buffer for that fuel canopy, you could do so.
Not multi-story, just that Building 6 would be taller than the fuel canopy.
Yes.
So I'm only asking that Building 6 be taller than the fuel aisle. So not that it'd be a second story.
Got it. So the condition will read...
And we're able to do that? I am satisfied.
Commissioner Lomis.
And I heard on Stockdale Highway, can't we put it on the site? The condition on the site? Because I don't want flashing signs on the neighbor either.
Yes, we thought we heard you say Stockdale Highway, but it could be the site.
The entire site, yes, including Buena Vista. It would still be a distraction to drivers. So it can be.
We'll just end that sentence with "shall be prohibited," period.
Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you. Commissioner Rudnick.
Thank you. I had to... I would like to add one more because there's been some comments up here. We would like the signage to be similar in nature and quality to the neighboring projects and not be dramatically different. We want to keep a homogeneity through the area.
We would just also add a condition then that the signage for this project shall be similar to that in the surrounding area.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lomis, here... that was before. Yep. Commissioner Bell? Requested to speak? Was that... Okay. Thank you. Yep. Okay. Seeing no other Commissioner comments, can I get a motion to... can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll give my motion. Since I was the most vocal outspoken person last time, I'll make the effort to make a motion to approve the... this project is... yeah, 6A, Project 6A and 6B. Is that right? And with the conditions that Mr. Coyle added, if they're agreeable to the architect and the developer, those additional conditions?
Derek Holswood, just one issue on the fenced, the undeveloped pad area. I don't think we're going to be allowed by the State of California to grass it. It's against... we can't use grass anymore. So we would not object to using DG or some other material that keeps the dust down and maybe even a color, but we can't... we just can't use grass.
Well, I think we probably recognize that. I know that at the hospital down the road, the children's hospital, they did some kind of...
Exactly, yeah.
Some kind of a...
Spray, yeah.
Yeah. Something of that nature. Yeah, I don't think we wanted to specify specifically what you needed to put there, but we wanted to make sure it was landscaped because we're not sure how long it's going to be before Phase 2 commences. So if the developer's agreeable to those other conditions, I'll make a motion to approve Item 6A and 6B.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Rudnick. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Coman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to communications. Mr. Coyle.
My only communication is that we have another planning commission meeting scheduled for March 7th.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Coman.
This comment is directed to staff. One of the issues that came up with this particular project was that the developer had a pre-approved CPD on this project that was dated. And I call attention to Section 17.54.080, Exploration of Zone or Plans. These plans are supposed to have a three-year life on them. At such point, the planning department is supposed to notify the commission, and then it would make the option to the commission to re-review. And that did not occur on this project for whatever reason. So my question to you is whether this can be... you guys can look at how many more of these projects that we have sitting out there that were approved 15 years ago that, you know, they're going to come around. Maybe had we had a chance to revisit some of these issues on the planning, maybe we wouldn't have as many neighboring comments. And so can we look and see how many of these we have sitting out there and whether they should be subject to this review?
Yes, we can, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. Seeing no other Commissioner comments, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:28. Thank you. Have a good evening.